If you're okay.
Hi, Pat.
Oh, yes. Hi, Pat.
This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Chairman, you all set to go?
I'm set to go.
Very good. Good evening. This is the virtual assembly meeting for Monday, June 15th. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed to attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on Channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in the line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich. MA.us. The format tonight has changed a bit as we will be inviting speakers during other agenda items. I guess I would ask for a little patience as we attempt to do our best of coordination. We have a few people interested in speaking during public comment and the old business sections at this time. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Scott. We moved into, we opened our meeting at six, excuse me, 5:45, moved into executive session, and the items we talked about on the executive session was respect to collective bargaining for Harwich Employees Association and the Highways Maintenance Employees Association. We will continue that discussion. Secondly, we discussed collective bargaining regarding open sessions, actually on several items, partly on vacation, sick leave times. And then, thirdly, we discussed very briefly strategy sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the fire director, the finance director, fire chief-elect, and police chief. We then are now move back to open session. And I would just comment to follow up what Scott said. We're operating a little differently tonight in our continuation of with the shutdown, we're shutting we're in and trying to be safe, but also at the same time opening and making it easier for public comment. So I hope you'll bear with us and we'll see how it works tonight. I'd ask you next to join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move next to weekly briefing. And Joe, Megan, you're up first.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm scrambling here for a moment just to get some documents that I can share on the screen for everyone to be aware of. I know we're joined by our health director, and we're also joined by the Chief Executive Officer of Outer Cape Health Services, Patricia Nadal. And I think, as you've all heard, Governor Baker has identified, I believe, 50 sites that are COVID-19 pop-up testing sites. And this is in response. I'll share it here just in a moment, real quick. So you can see there, this is the notice that the governor used at his press conference today around noon time. For people that have attended large gatherings, of course, as we all know, there have been protests, rallies, and marches over the last several weeks. And from a health perspective, we consider those to be large gatherings. And of course, large gatherings are problematic in COVID-19. So there are 50 test sites that will be set up that will pop up around the Commonwealth for Wednesday and Thursday, June 17th and 18th of this week. And for Cape Cod, that would be the three facilities that are related to the Outer Cape Health Services Organization. So I know the Outer Cape Health made contact with our health director today, this morning. Our health director notified me of it, and we immediately assembled around nine o'clock in the morning with the harbor master, the health director, the harbor master, police chief, deputy fire chief, deputy police chief, town engineer, and DPW to discuss this. For the board, the topic has been added to the agenda because what we're talking about in supporting Outer Cape Health to do this, we've identified a plan that encroaches upon the use of town property. And I'll hopefully be able to share that in just a moment for you to see. So you can see the area in town that we're talking about, obviously, Outer Cape Health Services directly across from Sacquetucket Harbor. And if you can see in the upper right-hand area, we're using that, requesting to use that side lot to impact upon traffic flow. And that is because, and again, I'll let Megan and Pat speak more directly to it because they know better than I, but we're expecting upwards of, or I would say probably a minimum of 200 each day that may avail themselves of the testing opportunity during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. both days. So working with public safety and other officials, we've tried to identify the quickest way to get people in through a registration process and process, which you can see up in this area here, and then proceed around and then go diagonally across. And you can see the flow that Outer Cape Health Services is looking to use. They'll have a tent set up, and then we would be looking to have that Hoyt Road section be a means of egress. Because as you'll hear in a moment, not only will the testing be going on, but full services for Outer Cape Health Services will still be going on. So at the conclusion of all of this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would be asking for the board to authorize the use of town property in support of this. But at this point, I will turn it over to Megan Eldridge, our health director, to fill in the blanks of what I may have missed. And then, of course, Mr. Chairman, we have the CEO of Outer Cape Health Services available as well.
Thank you, Joe. Megan, do you wish to start? And I'll move to Pat.
Sure. I can. I think Pat should start and let us know what the background is and what her expectations are for the next couple of days and how many people she's anticipating. And then I can fill in the blanks from there.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Pat, your picture has escaped me.
Sure. Good evening. I'm happy to be here this evening, and thank you for, we want to thank, clearly, we want to thank, the response this morning was incredible. So we've been, we were asked by the Governor's Command Center last Friday morning if we would participate in one of what's called these pop-up testing sites as they were, as they were planning to announce for anyone who had attended a mass gathering. And there he announced it today. But unfortunately, what we do believe, and we did discover today that other than a CVS in East Falmouth, we're the only testing site on Cape Cod. So the phone started ringing off the hook within minutes of his announcement, needless to say. And Harwich Port probably will be, we will schedule, we have a schedule for these tests, but we do believe, based on distancing, we'll fill up the schedule in Harwich fairly quickly. Our concern when we reached out this morning was, obviously, if we expected traffic, it really, we were concerned about Main Street backups. You know, we, we didn't, we were trying to get everything into our lot, all the cars into our lot. And you can see on the screen how we look to go into the lot, take a left. And we do have, the tent is already set up in the back. They came this afternoon to do that. So what we want to do is, obviously, with the collaboration we had this morning with folks who really felt that if we are going to see this kind of response, maybe bringing folks down to the Harwich, the harbor area, and sort of making a little longer queue and trying to get people off the main road, and then one way in, one way out onto Hoyt. So this is an opportunity for folks. It's a free testing. It says free testing for those who've attended a mass gathering. Obviously, that's, you know, when folks are calling for appointments, which they've started at 12:00, 12:15, this is a pretty popular opportunity for folks. So I'll take questions. I think that this is, you know, we do think this, we've opened it up at eight o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night, as we were asked. We do think there'll be a continued stream of cars. We're going to try to, with our scheduling, try to plot it out. But we do expect, even though we've asked for people to call for appointments, we do expect a walk-in or drive-in option that people will take, will take advantage of as well. So we're prepared to be able to put those folks in the queue and register them on-site. So it's a pretty daunting endeavor, and we certainly appreciate the help of everyone in the town because we're not sure we could do this by ourselves.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we also have Chief Gilmet on the call, if you want to ask the chief for his traffic control measures. And then, lastly, we've already scheduled a follow-up briefing tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. for us to go over what's discussed tonight, contingency planning, and then we'll do an early walkthrough Wednesday morning.
That'd be good, Chief, because when I look at this map, it's not, I'm not clear exactly on the traffic flow. Looks like you're bringing them into Sacquet, into Wishmere, Sacquetucket Harbor, around the outer parking lot first, and then running around, then back into Outer Cape Health. And so you're going to block, could you explain that to me?
Chief, are you able to join in?
Yeah, can you hear me, Joe?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, this was, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this was the best quick plan we could come up with with this site. If, I think, we all were in agreement that this is a very challenging area of town to try and do something like this. So we tried to utilize that lot in front of Sacquetucket Harbor. And the plan is to bring everybody in off of 28 into that initial staging area and stack them in there in probably not just a single queue, and probably two or three across, as many as we can get around that circle. And then up through, through a fence area that can be taken down and up into the upper lot, and around the corner and out to 28, and then into the lot of the Outer Cape Health. Again, it's not, you know, if you're familiar with the Four Seas location of testing site that was going on for quite a while, that's more of an optimal location. You know, something like, in our town here, Montemoy would be similar to that, plenty of space. But this is very challenging, but short notice, and we're going to try and make it work.
Now, appreciate that. So you're a position in officer on 28 to direct traffic, is that?
Yes, we had a discussion with the deputy chief, and we figured probably three, but we're already running across issues with trying to fill this. And I would say absolute minimum would be two. I think myself and the deputy probably be out there as well at the initial stages of this to try and take a reading on it. But two or three traffic posts will be, will be up.
You know, I say, great effort to move on a short time to make it happen. Michael?
The only concern I have, sorry, the only concern I have is the harbor traffic. So coming out of the new parking lot and cutting back over into the old parking lot, and then the one exit leaving Sacquetucket Harbor, what's going to be done when you come, come into there to allow dockside traffic, boat traffic, large boats, trailers, to be able to exit that when there's clearly going to be a bottleneck coming out of that entrance to the harbor?
Yep, it's definitely going to be a busy point. We are getting CERT personnel who have experience with traffic movement within parking lots, not so much on main roads. We need the police out on the main roads. But I think the CERT people have, have experience with, with moving traffic in the lot, and we can certainly, you know, as I, as I stated this morning to the group, that they need a very precise briefing on their roles at each point in this.
So somebody, chief, may be at that point before they make the corner to go out into the last exit onto 28 to allow the
Absolutely.
municipal traffic to go first. Okay. And then, has John Rendon, was John Rendon part of this briefing? Has he?
He was, yeah. He was present today. In fact, he offered his input and felt that this was the best plan in that area there. We've talked to John about trying to reach out to his customer base. But again, we're going to meet up again tomorrow morning first thing. But again, if I could just very quickly, we had police, fire, health, engineering, harbor, public works, administration, all in place within, within minutes of hearing, you know, Pat's call for support. So our team responded quickly and thoroughly.
Thank you.
We're hopeful. We'll find out more tomorrow.
Yep. Ed?
If we could go, if we could get Pat back up, for people who want to make a reservation, what's the process?
For everyone, there is a number. I don't know it off the top of my head. It's published on mass.gov/gettested. We do have a press release. Okay, there it is. And there's a, there's a separate number that if we don't, there's three lines that actually that number goes to, if we don't get the calls, we will have an opportunity to leave a message. So that, that number, 905-2801, I think it says, it's kind of off by screen. But that number is available to call, and it'll be available to call throughout the day, even on Thursday. We will close up shop. The state only wants to do this till seven o'clock on Thursday night. So we, as I said, we opened the lines at 12:15, and we have had a pretty incredible response. The phone's been ringing all afternoon. But 905-2801, and that will get you the opportunity to register. There are no questions. It is a free test, supported by the state. And folks are really taking advantage of the opportunity.
And that's 508 area code?
508 area code, 905-2801. And if the operator isn't available, there is an opportunity to leave a message with your name, date of birth, and your contact telephone number, and someone will call you back. Actually, I was even answering the phones for a while this afternoon myself.
Of course you were.
Pat, do you have any idea of the, of the duration of this?
Well, we're going to do it, the state has asked us to do it, to do this for two days, for Wednesday and Thursday, 8:00 to 7:00, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. At this point, with the response we're hearing, we do think the Harwich Port site, even though we'll try to move people to the Wellfleet and Provincetown site as much as we can, but we do think the Harwich Port site will become one of the more popular, only because, other than us on the Cape, the CVS in East Falmouth is the other option. We did not know that until they announced it today. We had not, we had no idea who the other folks were on the Cape who were offering testing. So this is an opportunity. The governor, obviously, this today at noon time, did encourage people to take advantage of this. But we do think that the Harwich Port site may be our busier site
It may continue.
for the two days.
It may continue for more weeks than just the two days, or you have no idea?
No. They're only, they're only identifying these two days. They're paying for this, so it's free to the community. So they're only willing, because we did ask them if we couldn't get people in on the two days, what did they want? They said, we're only doing these two days.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Other questions, comments for Pat? If not, Joe, we'll ask Megan to come back on then?
Certainly, yeah. And as we wait for Megan, I'll tell you that we're also discussing broadcast messaging that we hope to release tomorrow to start getting information out there about traffic impacts and availability. And we've talked about the electronic signboards as well.
Michael?
I'll make a motion. Do you want a motion?
Well, let's hear from Megan first, then we'll do the motion. Megan?
Hi, Larry. Thanks. We, as health departments across the Cape, have planned for something similar to this for a large-scale drive-through, flu clinics or vaccination clinics. So we do have some resources to offer to Outer Cape. And Pat and I have talked a bit today about what we can do to offer help. And I think between our past experience doing these types of things and Pat's staff, we'll be able to run this efficiently. And I am very excited about the opportunity to host it at Harwich. I know it's not a Harwich-hosted event, but it is, it is nice to be able to offer this to the people of Cape Cod. It's a wonderful opportunity.
Yep. We all fully agree. I see my colleagues shaking their heads. Michael, I cut you off before, but go ahead.
That's okay. I move that we approve the use of town property, Sacquetucket Harbor Parking Lot, in support of Outer Cape Health Services Pop-Up Testing Center for June 17th, 2020, and June 18th, 2020.
Second, any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move ahead. And thanks, everyone, for fast action. And we'll look forward, hopefully, the results all come back negative.
I hope so. Thank you. I want to say thank you so much. We have not ever had this kind of response from any community, and it is overwhelming what Megan and all the folks who just left their chairs today, the fire station, said, let's go to your house and see what, what we can do. So we are just overwhelmed. So thank you very, very much. We really appreciate. But this is amazing to be able to offer this to our communities. It is.
Thank you, Pat.
The Harwich Way.
The Harwich Way, yes.
Absolutely.
Joe will move on to the mandatory workplace safety standards, I guess.
So before we get into that, I would like to refer back to Megan to talk about her memo from June 11th.
Oh, sorry.
And then we can get into the other three topics that are there.
Sure. Since the 11th, we still are holding steady at 121 cases in Harwich, and 71 of those 121 are associated with staff and residents at Wingate, leaving 50 cases outside of Wingate. And good news is that 43 of those 50 cases have recovered. Unfortunately, four have passed away, but it does only leave three people that are currently active in isolation. And those three people all live in the same household, and we understand where the infection came from. And they are following the isolation guidelines and hopefully will be released within the next week. So we've been doing quite well so far in Harwich. In Barnstable County, we have 1,489 cases and 130 deaths in the county. And the Commonwealth is up to 105,000 cases, 105, 690 cases, and 7,647 deaths. So we're, we're still showing a decline in the number of positive testing every day. The hospitalization rates are still going down. Today's numbers show that there are six people in Cape Cod Hospital that are in the COVID unit. And four of those six are in ICU. And then in Falmouth Hospital, there are a total of nine patients with COVID there, and two of those are in the ICU in Falmouth Hospital. So we're looking, we're looking better each week. So far, we're doing well. And that's the numbers update.
Thank you, Megan.
So, Mr. Chairman, to get to the next topic of towns' compliance with mandatory workplace safety standards, this is sort of a catch-all. And at a previous meeting, Selectman McCaskill had asked about Cultural Center reopening. So any of the reopenings that we'd be talking about are going to be driven by this topic here. So Megan and I, and Megan will speak to it far better than I can, given all the calls she's had to endure with Department of Public Health and labor standards. But the, the mandatory workplace safety standards are going to have an impact, as you've heard me say at previous meetings, on how we are laid out in our offices and staff and all of that. So Megan met with me Friday afternoon, and we've started to go over preliminary plans of what we would need to do as a town before Town Hall could open up, and then before any other buildings could reopen to the public. So at this point, Megan, I'll unfairly put it back on you to just sort of give a tap on those mandatory standards, and where you think we'll be for reopening.
Okay. So at 25% maximum capacity, we are very limited in the number of people we can have in Town Hall. And I've started at Town Hall, even though we do have other buildings, Town Hall, I figured, was the most pressing to get open at this point. 25% maximum capacity translates to one person per 400 square feet. The thing to remember is that offices, if they're less than 400 square feet, they can still house one person. We have the staff to worry about, and then the public to worry about as far as getting the right occupancy in the buildings. So I went floor by floor, office by office, to figure out where we're good and where we are too crowded. On the first floor, the ground floor, the first office on the left is the tax office, and there's three women that work in that front space. It is only 367 square feet. I'm sorry, 802 square feet. So only two of those three people can remain in that office at the same time. And then Amy Bullock is in her own office in the back, so she could stay where she is. Going down to the next office, the assessing office, I'm sorry, I'm getting these mixed up, the accounting office, there's two women in there that share a space that's much smaller than, than 400 square feet even. So one person would need to be relocated. And on the other side of the hallway, the tax assessors, two women share that front customer service area, and there's two offices in the back, one is Donna's, and then there's another that's used for the assessing boards' meetings. So one person would need to be removed from that, that bigger office in the middle and be relocated somewhere else. The administration area is all one person per office, so no adjustments or changes need to be made there. And up on the second floor, we have made changes already to affect that.
Before we move to the second, Michael had a question on the first floor, I believe. So.
Sure.
On assessing, why can't we take one of the employees and put them in the assessor's office, since I don't believe they're meeting at this point? Even if they are meeting, it's, it's at night usually.
Yep, that, that was one suggestion I have. That's one suggestion. And we also have a break room on the first floor that we could convert to office space if needed. So that's another option. So there's, there's a couple vacant rooms or empty spaces right now that I think we, as a town, or you as administration, need to figure out who you want to put where, or, or what, what offices can work best remotely. I didn't kick that, that was my, my decision to move people. I just wanted to give you all the information.
We have some flexibility, is what you're saying. So.
Right.
Megan, move to the second, yes, Don?
I just wanted to add, as Megan mentioned, and there's sort of a theme throughout the meeting tonight. So many of these topics are all interrelated. In a moment, you're going to hear about the Technology Task Force and their charge, the Health and Safety Task Force, and they're all coming together to bear on these. So when we talk about remote capacity, we have an obligation to provide for that as well, as we spread people out and have them work remotely. So we'll be talking more about those capabilities in a moment.
Yep. Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to bring up another thing that isn't all that flexible. We got the town election coming up, and there are going to be a significant amount of mail-in ballots, because that's what we're encouraging them to do. So it's, it wouldn't be possible to just tell somebody that they don't have to go to work, or, we really have to be able to have them in proximity.
Yeah. Joe?
I said I was unfair at the top of this when I handed it over to Megan to talk about, I didn't want to steal the thunder, but I'm going to steal it, Megan, if I may. We are
Go for it.
July 1st. targeting July 1st as a start date for all this, because that's our mandated obligation. We need to have this in place for July 1st. And we also think that that could be the beginning of Phase 3, which all ties together. So mercifully for us, at least we've gone past the town election. We have that flexibility for that day, but not the after-work that impacts on town election.
So if I may, I'm sorry, we're interrupting you, Megan, but what you're talking about is opening town offices. At what point will we allow public to access? Is that Phase 3, that there'll be some access into the building as well?
What's, what's holding up public access now? There's two things holding it up. And the first is the occupancy. If we calculate out all of the public spaces, not including the Griffin Room, or the Small Hearing Room, or the Selectmen's Room, or Library, we have enough square feet to have eight people from the public come in. And that's not very many. That's both, all three floors can have a maximum of eight people to meet this 25% maximum capacity. So figuring out who gets the eight people and when is, has been a challenge. And we've, we've come up with a plan to have each department be able to have a guest, or a visitor, or a customer at a time. So they're able to do things by appointment, call-ahead appointments. So we wouldn't need a switchboard operator or someone to manage the ins and outs of the building. Rather, we'd put it on the individual departments for figuring out when they can have a person in. That way, we don't have to have someone outside of Town Hall counting how many people are in the building. And then the second part of the holdup is the mandatory safety standards, which I gave you the training manual for last week, has mandatory things in it that we can't quite meet, which are, we just got the hand sanitizer pumps installed last Thursday. We're still waiting for a few signs. It should be this week that everything's delayed in receiving things. So it's the signs, the training, and the hand sanitizer stations that we're still waiting for. But that, and then figuring out who gets the eight customers a day is, is the hard part right now.
Good. But at that point, that allows possibly to have some, some of our smaller committees, for instance, actually, like we're doing, whether it's Concom.
Yeah.
Or.
Yes.
With in conjunctions, go-to meeting, then.
Correct. So these, these eight people that we're talking about are for visitors to the individual offices. But you can have more than eight people in the meeting spaces. The current occupancy of the room you're in now is 146. So at 25% occupancy, you could have a maximum of 36 people in that room, as long as you can make it six feet between people. So I haven't measured out how many people that actually works out to be, but you could have about a maximum of 36 people in that room. We'd be able to have meetings in person at that point. The, those numbers don't impact the eight people outside of that.
So yeah, and you were talking possibly beginning July, we could at least have some opening, when you get all your other stuff in order. Megan, I'm sorry.
Yes, at the latest, July 1st.
You were going to move to the second floor, and we jumped in.
Oh, that's right. Second floor, we've already made some office changes to have more social distancing. Upstairs, the health office, we have everyone, I have an office, Jen has a space, and then the two inspectors have, are sharing a space right now. So one of them will have to be moved out or work remotely. Building, right now, there's a fire inspector that shares Ray's office, and he'll have to relocate back to his own office, or take his paperwork, and, and go to his own office at the fire station and come back. There is a open seat right now in the building admin area. Right now, only one person is allowed in that space anyway. But when that position is filled, that will be a place where one person will have to work in a different location. The building inspector's office is the same way. There is one person in there now, only one person's allowed, but there is a vacant position. So when, and if that gets filled, that too will have to work out of an alternating schedule. Planning's all set with one person in each area, and conservation is sharing one large room that is smaller than 400 square feet. So they will have, one will have to work remotely, or alternate schedules, or work in a different area.
Thank you, Megan.
But we do have, we do have the Small Hearing Room, and if that is not utilized for meeting spaces, that could be utilized as an office space as well.
Any other questions, comments from Megan? You must have a good ruler, I guess, while you're talking, so.
Griffin has been great with giving me the measurements of all these places.
Thank you. Joe will move on, then, to, I think, Megan, you had a letter in here about the entertainment update. Do you want to address that?
So if I may, we were going to cover that under Item B, and that's supportive community, business community.
Okay.
Not that it's necessarily support, but that's what we'll talk about. The, the next item is, the next two items actually can be combined, and they are the task force. So I've, I've made reference to this before, and I've updated the board, but I believe you have in your packet the two descriptor pages of the task force. I hope so. Yep. So as Megan was talking about, meeting mandatory workplace safety standards, occupants, occupancy capacity and all of that, and also having to make changes for remote working capabilities. I had identified a technology task force to evaluate and make recommendations to me on following topics that you can see listed there, and the folks that I had as part of that. That task force is going to bear fruit in the sense of a discussion later on this evening of a proposed contract for purchase of laptops, which gets to a concept in the CARES Act of accelerated telework capacity. So there is a funding, excuse me, there's a reimbursement mechanism there. But it's a recognition that to meet our occupancy standards, if we've done all of our efforts on identifying office space, and we still have employees that don't have a place, we could rely upon remote work capability, and obviously, a rotational remote work capability. And then tied into that, the Health and Occupational Safety Task Force. And, and this is a discussion I want to have in greater length with the board, as it may impact upon fiscal year 21 budgeting. I know we've been talking about cuts and deficits, but these two areas, I think, have been clearly borne out by the last three months in response to pandemic, and what we see being the world for the next months, if not years ahead. I've asked Megan and Sean Libby with Kate Tenalia and the Health Department to work on both health issues and occupational safety. So we had a discussion earlier this year with the DPW Director, who identified obligations that towns have under the state occupational safety standards. But those also come into play with COVID. And you can see there, the three bullet points that I've asked Megan, Sean, and Kate to look at are, obviously, everything Megan's been doing on a health response to COVID-19, occupational safety, which is going on now, but will need to ramp up, and then custodial services, as you know, is absolutely critical as we, as we get into this discussion of infection and all that. So for the technology task force, like I said, there'll be a discussion later on this evening for a potential contract to that. But Megan, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything on the Health and Occupational Safety Task Force. Sorry, I got you with your mouth full. That was my fault, not yours.
Okay, it's just a little cough drop.
I can.
Go ahead, Larry.
I can let you finish that, and I can ask a question on the technology task force.
Sure.
That way you can finish your cough drop. I was wondering, the technology task force would be worthwhile to, or advisable to add a, one of the department heads. So you have a, basically a user involved with that discussion, as well as the, required participants are all, you know, IT-focused, but just overall, basically a user, department head is part of that, part of that group.
If I may, Lieutenant Tilslie happens to be on the call, happens to be the co-chair of that group, and happens to take my cue that he, there he is. Scott, can you just talk about how you have reached out to end users in this effort for the task force generally? And then we'll talk more in the meeting ahead on the computers.
See, my view is, I don't want only experts on this. I want some idiot like me, who actually has to use it.
Sure. I guess I would say that we need to move very quickly. So we didn't do any individual attack with everybody, trying to figure out what their needs were. We started out by saying that we wanted to make sure that all of the department heads had an immediate ability to work remotely, and that we would expand that slightly in a second phase to some of the support staff, clerical staff, to be able to make sure that we could continue the efforts of all of the town departments, including, you know, DPW, water, fire, police, as well as those in Town Hall. So we've got some great feedback from the department heads at this point. And if the contract tonight gets approved, we'll move again tomorrow morning very quickly, and trying to sort of schedule the rollout of those.
Thank you, Scott. Move ahead, Joe, you're talking.
Megan, Health and Safety Task Force?
Okay, the three areas that I evaluated were health, custodial services, and occupational safety. Under, under normal good times, the Health Department is fairly well-staffed. We could use another person, obviously. We have myself, one other full-time and one part-time person. And we, we get the job done. But with COVID now, and moving forward with COVID-related enforcement, and the phone calls are, the phone calls and emails are incredibly overwhelming. We are, I can't even tell you how many we get a day, in the hundreds of, of phone calls, emails, and information coming to us for questions from industry, as well as complaints from the public about people not complying with, with rules. And moving forward, I can see a real need for an additional staff person in the Health Department. Custodial services, we're grossly understaffed right now in custodial services. We have buildings that we don't even clean professionally, or with custodians and janitors. There are buildings that the town occupies and uses daily that rely on staff members, department heads, to clean and maintain those areas. So having more custodial staff is, it's required. We, we have to clean frequently touched surfaces and restrooms daily, in any building that's open, whether it's open to the public or just to the employees. And right now, we're not meeting that task now, and we're not open to the public yet. So custodial services right now is, is on the top priority list for me, as far as getting services to us, for not only the buildings that we occupy year-round, but for the bathhouses and the comfort stations at the parks. They, they too need daily cleaning, if not more than that, to maintain the sanitization level that we need them to, 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 to meet. And the third task or topic was occupational safety. And I know that's not normally within the Health Department's realm. However, being in the EOC and hearing about how, how our staff and employees are operating, I, I see that we don't meet most, I shouldn't say most, some OSHA standards. And I know that we have employees that have been tasked to do that, but it's not, it's not their only task. And it's difficult to focus on OSHA standards when you're also focusing on other things. So I really do recommend that we have a staff member or someone dedicated to OSHA compliance. We have many, many materials, chemicals, cleaners that our staff are using that are too harsh. We don't have proper training on how to use them. And it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. So on top of cleaning and disinfecting properly, we need to train and show our staff how to clean and disinfect properly, and use the right supplies. So those three areas I looked at, I'm recommending that the Health Department be involved in occupational health, safety, and custodial services in order to get the level of, of professionalism, the level of expertise that we really do need in order to keep people healthy and safe, both the public as well as the employees.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Megan and I have, and thank you, Megan, for that. We've had, for our time in the EOC, we've had numerous discussions about how we're going to manage this in the short term and the long term. And I wanted these topics to be on the agenda to let the board know that there are these other items for technology and health that we may need, or we should consider making investments in. And I will have a proposal drawn up for the board's consideration. But I wanted to bring it up this evening, because in, as I said, the topics are tied together this tonight, because we will be talking about fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, and the dire effects we have. We also need to be mindful of some obligations that I think we have going forward. So this was the first time I wanted to really put it out there more formally, but I will have a proposal before the board, and maybe able to have it to the board as soon as next week's meeting, if there's interest in that.
Thank you, Joe. I remind everyone that I think it's been several months ago now, but we heard a report that we're going to have to up our game in occupational safety procedures to meet state and federal guidelines. And so that's been, before this all started, we had some pressure to do that. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unless I'm mistaken here, we've already had numerous discussions about things that are discreet, that are related to COVID.
Right.
That would be covered under the CARES Act as reimbursable thoughts. So I mean, for the public to understand, we're not just going to beef up staff.
Right. Okay, good point. Yeah.
Good point.
Okay. Anything else, Joe? We'll wait for the.
That was really it on the, on those two items there. And I know that we've been joined by our Director of Chamber of Commerce. So that flows to the next topic, which is our standard topic of update on ongoing efforts by the town in support of the business community. And, Mr. Chairman, I just ask, before we get into some possible good news and cheer from Cindy, I wanted to put out some of the bad news, if you will.
Joe, if I could interrupt you just for a second. On the, on the last topic, as you bring forward the plan, are other towns doing this, neighboring towns, and are there people that we can share? And to Don's point, I think both items would be reimbursable under the CARES Act. But if we're looking at going forward with this, can we at least look at the county?
Sure.
As I always ask.
Yep.
And can we look at what our surrounding towns are doing, and are there people that we can share, or services that we can share?
Absolutely.
And make that part of it, instead of tackling, tackling it alone?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for that.
And thanks. So the bad news is, if you will, there's, so there's a number, the way that the calendar falls, you have a number of licenses later on this meeting about entertainment. Megan and I had a conversation on Friday. There was a Department of Public Health call on Friday that led to the memo that you see in there about outdoor entertainment. Megan, if I'm correct, you had further updates from DPH that may have modified this slightly? Is that correct?
I received an email confirmation from Department of Public Health Friday afternoon with my question about outdoor entertainment at restaurants. And it was clarified that during this phase that we're in, Phase 2 of the reopening plan, that outdoor live performances are not currently allowed. And that, they didn't distinguish between a one-man And that they didn't distinguish between a one-man band or a comedian. So live performances of any nature right now are not allowed in, in phase two.
And Megan, if I can ask, that was regardless of whether it was outdoor or expanded outdoor, correct?
That's correct. Whether it was outdoor or new outdoor.
Thank you.
Even in your old space, you're not allowed to do that.
Thank you. So you can see in her memo to us, she's asking you to keep that in mind as you get into the entertainment licenses later on, that even if a license is approved, we are under this restriction by the state.
So just clarify, we, we can approve the license, but this supersedes you for temporarily what the act...
Correct. Yes, it's an appropriate action to renew licenses or issue, but there are impacts.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had read the underlying memo from the state. What I don't understand is what the substantive difference, if they're talking about a draw, you know, of a crowd.
Yeah.
Between live entertainment and amplified canned entertainment. I mean, I, I don't see any difference whatsoever.
Anyway, I don't either. Anyway, Megan, can you clarify that?
Well, if I may, before we get to Megan, I, I had that same conversation and asked if we could interpret that. The DPH's directive to include recorded, and that's why Megan sent the email seeking clarification. So from a DPH standpoint, they're only talking about live performances. But I don't believe I'm overstepping by saying that this board is the licensed authority, and you can add further restrictions locally if you deem necessary.
Yeah.
Again, we're still waiting to hear from Cindy about perhaps some positive aspects over the weekend. So I don't want to hamster in that discussion, but this is something that live music, it is the state without, without hesitation.
So...
If we want to expand that to our type of license, we could talk about that.
Okay. Good job. So we can, we can, we could consider that under, we have to bring that back as a separate agenda item if we wish to define outside entertainment as both recorded and live, or can we act on that?
Motion.
No, I would argue that as you do the licenses later on, you can identify.
We could do that now.
For both, you know, generally and for COVID.
Okay. Cindy, it sounds like Joe's giving you the floor.
Wasn't quite sure, and I was waiting to see what I should do here. So yes, we have had a full week of both, or actually all three industries, retail, restaurants, and lodging. And everyone has said that they've had positive sales, and the room, hotels, and short-term rentals are seeing some action, which are all positive things. The nice weather's helped for sure. Restaurants are busy. As you've all seen, many have recreated themselves to alter either parking lots, adding tents, or even their business all in general. One example is Lala Wet. We've got our own Harwich Port Cowboy with Christian. So everyone's very happy with the business and the support of the town. I didn't get a chance last week amidst everything, and I interrupted, and I felt badly about that. But I do want to commend the town staff for helping to get this done so very quickly to open up, you know, we waited to hear from the governor on Saturday, the eighth, the sixth. And then Megan and Joe and the team, just thank you all very, very much. The businesses are happy that we were able to do that. We were one of the first towns to move ahead and get our restaurants creatively open. So thank you for that. On another happy note, I hope it got delivered to you. I had a little elf come into, thank you, thank you. The new Harwich magazine is there. I usually am able to deliver it to all of you, so I didn't get to, but my elf, our almost fire chief, Mr., our Dave LeBlanc was with me today as we presented the magazine to our almost retiring fire chief, Norm Clark. We had an opportunity in the magazine to hail to the chief on, I believe it's page 57, to just do our own little acknowledgement of the chief and everything he's meant to Harwich. So those are all my happy words, as Joe calls them, from the Chamber of Commerce. The magazine is in. We are not allowed to be open. Twenty-five percent of our occupancy is even less than me. So we have a, we are open, but with a takeout window. So I have welcome bags that we're doing with the magazine. And then we will be starting next Monday doing visitor-only beach stickers through the takeout window. And we will be doing that the seven days a week like we do. So that's all from the Harwich Chamber.
Thank you, Cindy. Comments, questions for Cindy? Joe? We'll move then on to, I guess next on is the consent agenda. Joe, before we start, Scott, let me ask you, has anyone asked to speak to the items on the weekly briefing?
Yes, sir. We've had two people that have requested to speak during public comment. And I see that as section five. We can certainly push that off if you wish. And I've got someone for old business and someone for new business.
Just take just the, the ones that are interested in the weekly briefing aspects and the...
Very good. The first person who sent me an email was Tom Sherry. He has not indicated through further email whether he's actually on the phone. I don't see him on, on the call yet. There are two unidentified calls, so I'll sort of open it up. Mr. Sherry, if you're out there on the phone, you can hit star six to unmute yourself. I don't hear him. So the next is Donna, Donna Richardson, who I did see on the phone on the call. So Mr. Richardson, the floor is yours.
Donna, I think you're muted.
Yes, so on your screen at the bottom, you should be able to click your microphone and unmute yourself.
How's that? Is that...
Period.
Okay. I started to say, thank you for this opportunity to meet with the board. I want to address a conflict of interest issue currently happening in the town of Harwich. A part-time employee of the DPW is also a member of the finance committee. And after speaking with the State Ethics Committee today, they state this person cannot be a part of any finance discussions for the DPW. They added, there is no gray area in this matter. A part-time or a full-time employee should not be a part of any finance committee discussions, in this case, the DPW. So that leaves me with three questions. Are the parties or person involved aware of this, that they should not participate in these financial discussion? And how does one know the person steps aside when the DPW discussions occur? And my last question is, have there already been finance discussions? I mean, they've been talking about crisis for bus, for transfer station stickers and all. Has this person been allowed to be in those discussions? I, I need some direction.
Donna, would I can, Joe, go ahead.
If you'd like, I can answer all three on behalf of the board.
Go ahead.
First to the question of, does the employee know? The answer is yes. This goes back to 2019, and the employee was advised of the conflict of interest in state ethics requirements. The employee in question did file the requisite notifications and are on file with the town. And I think the question was, how would you know if they have? So this person in question was present at our day-long budget session on March 7th, 2020. And you can see the video at the time, and prior to the Department of Public Works budget coming up, that gentleman recused himself and removed himself from the room. In fact, in that instance, he removed himself from the building. He did return later in the meeting when it was not related to Public Works. And that answers the other question of, have there been finance committee meetings related to the DPW? And the answer is, there was on March 7th prior to COVID. It's my understanding that the finance committee has not yet met again. Were they to meet and were to be related to Public Works, that individual would handle themselves in the same manner of identifying the conflict, recusing themselves, and removing themselves from the room.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that. I wish you would inform me that of my emails would have saved me a lot of time, but it's good to know.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. And thank you, Joe. Who, Michael?
I just would point out that I did read a response to Mrs. Richardson, and the response outlined the legal opinion that we got.
And that's what I, and that's what I...
I don't want to make it sound like we didn't get back to her.
Yeah.
I definitely read, read that there was an email sent to you, Mr. Richardson, that outlined the legal opinion, which outlined almost every question that you asked, except does this individual...
Oh. Well, I'm not getting to that now, but that is not, that information was not in that email, what he just said tonight. But anyway, that's okay. I'm, I'm clear on it tonight, and that's the important thing.
I responded to the email with the legal opinion we had.
It, it said that the, the term office is not defined in the town charter. That was the email I received.
Okay. I guess we're settled now, though, so we'll, we'll move on. Thank you, Donna.
Good.
Thank you. We'll move next then to the consent agenda.
No, there's public comments in between.
Well, that's what this was, public comment. We had two there, unless someone else showed up.
Tom Sherry did.
That's it until, until the new business section.
Okay. Okay. So we'll, we'll move on then to the consent agenda.
Want me to do that, Paul?
Please.
Vote to approve Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $800. Vote to accept a donation from the Jeff and Sandy Wyckoff Lane Foundation in the amount of $15,900 to the Shellfish Lab gift account. Vote to approve letter of support for the municipal vulnerability preparedness MVP action grant application, Town of Barnstable.
Second? Is there any discussion? I would only ask that if you can sign the letter of support tonight. That came out at the last moment, and we need that supporting letter, and it's, it's to our benefit that they give money to this organization. So I think, Joe, you have that letter available to us. If no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Larry, on some of these, if it's appropriate, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Right away, so we can start moving through them.
I would like that, so we can speed it up.
Scott Boyd wants discussion.
We'll stop.
We do it under discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I don't think you have to read it first.
I'd, you read it, yeah.
All right. So I move that we approve the police department annual appointments for FY 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On, on B, I'm not sure that this is an action we need to take. I think a consensus of the board that we, that we ask the police chief and the police department to respond to the conservation.
I agree. I was part of the, I see Amy on the line. This is the Conservation Commission action. I felt the time to be nice for us to lend our support to this. So if we, if we do that, Amy, that would be sufficient, I think, if we just, consensus that we support this action.
Yes, and I have spoken in the past with the chief, and I spoke again with Deputy Chief Considine. And I think we're going to set something up so we can do a site visit out there. But this was just to make it kind of a known thing to the Board of Selectmen and just to get your support.
And I would just add, if I could, to the town administrator, if we could meet with the DPW director as well, along with Amy, to get up to where these vehicles are going in and put some more boulders. I frequent that area with my dogs, and there is a lot of boulders that, they need to replace some of the boulders that new trails have been put in. So if we could ask Link, that would stop some of the dumping at least.
Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
We've moved to that quickly then, and hope that will, you'll get it done.
All right. I move that we approve the use of town beach parking lot, Pleasant Road Beach for staging of sand nourishment for Levin Shore Road.
Second. Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Scott, let me have Michael comment first, and we'll bring back, bring you back.
So my only comment was...
Yes, sir.
Can we get an idea of how long the sand's going to be in the parking lot? And maybe I missed it. But what's the date, and how long is the sand going to be there, and will it impact our beach users?
Scott, is the applicant on the line?
I don't see his name up there, but there are a couple of callers that are unidentified. Bob Perry was the individual who wanted to speak. Mr. Perry, if you are on the line, star, star six, we're going to mute you.
Amy, did you have any information that in response to those questions?
Yeah. I don't know an exact date yet. That was to be determined essentially by your vote this evening. They want to do it before the Fourth of July. And to my knowledge, it would be a one-day use of the parking lot. And they would, they would coordinate with Eric Beebe, Link, and myself so that they know when the parking lot would be, would be used, and it wouldn't be during a high-volume day.
Michael?
So I would just, as part of our vote, that they have to have approval from all three that you just mentioned, and that the town administrator could get back to us via email. We just have to make sure that this doesn't carry over. But if you three are okay with it, Conservation and Eric especially, then I would still be okay with it.
Okay. No discussion? Scott, I interrupted you before. Are you okay with this now?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure we open the floor to Mr. Perry, but he did not speak up, so thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Larry, on the next one, if we could have a little conversation first, I think given the current situation, COVID-19, I'm not sure that we should be meeting every other week. And I would, I would rather see this be a, whether it be a weekly decision by the chairman, if there's enough information to have a meeting. But with our help and support to the businesses and the fact that we may be needed, I don't think a blanket statement to meet every other week right now is a responsible decision of the board.
I, Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, to further what Michael just said, we got a town meeting, a regular town meeting, coming up in September 28th. If we're fortunate enough to keep the management of this town intact until we get there, the last thing I want to see us do is shorten the time for preparation. We only need three of us to be able to conduct a meeting. So frankly, I don't even feel like we should cancel if we feel like we can get away with it, because there's a lot of stuff that we still have to agree to.
Yeah. And I'm agreeable that I would like to have some flexibility. If we come up with a week that it appears that we should take off, I'd like to have, be able to...
Oh, yeah.
To, to email you and cancel the meeting if we, because in the middle of summer, we could do that.
But you could do that.
I'm okay with a full meeting, and then I could say, you know, this is the time to have a week off.
Yeah.
Joe, you okay with that?
I am. My only question for the board is, do you want to affirm the proposed date for the non-resident taxpayers' meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty simple. Yeah, I would go ahead and do that.
Sure.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll add a meeting every week with giving the option for, for us to, if we have a live schedule, if we can combine it, we'll do so.
Just for, for the public that hasn't read the packet, the meeting for the non-resident taxpayers would be August 10th.
Is there, I guess we have a motion on that then, is...
No motion necessary.
Okay. We'll move then to the holiday schedule.
Yep. I move that we approve the proposed holiday schedule for FY 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Michael?
The only discussion I had would be the day before the Fourth of July, that Friday. Is that traditionally a day that we grant off?
It's the federal holiday.
So...
The third is.
Yeah, we, we adhere to the Secretary of State's calendar.
Answered.
All right. So we're set on that?
Yes. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Um, I move that we approve the application for a permit of relief from noise by law, Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town of Harwich, for a live music permit for the farm open house, Potluck, Cape Farm Supply, 1601 Factory Road, date June 27th, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Uh, there's a note on the bottom, coronavirus postponed dates, if necessary, would be July 25th or August 19th, same time, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
See any, uh, discussion, Steve? You wanted to?
Can, are, are we restricted with what Megan has told us, that no live entertainment? I mean.
It's a private property.
Pardon?
It's a private property.
Did, did we get a second on the motion yet, just so?
A second, we have.
Thank you.
Uh, that's a good question. He's using, it's private, what do you think?
Well. All the other, uh, uh, entertainment license we give are, most of them are on private properties, too.
We'd have to maintain that with no live entertainment, I would think. Michael?
I would disagree. I think, uh, private property in a business and a business entertainment license would be one thing. Somebody with a 20-acre farm that can clearly social distance.
Well, he's not going to bother anyone, that's, uh, clear.
Yeah, with, can clearly social distance. I wouldn't think that that would fall under any, uh, health code. Uh, and I do believe private property homeowner is very different from a business, uh, personally. So I, I, I certainly would support this.
Personally, I question, uh, this person's need to actually apply for this license, but, you know.
I might agree with you on that as well. But he did, therefore, I don't want to hold it up.
No, in fact, he, he called me, just to be sure we were going to go ahead and get it on, and then he had alternate days to move ahead, so he could schedule it. Don?
Hey, I just want on, uh, the applicant to understand that, uh, us approving this would not actually flow to him making excessive noise.
Yeah, I think just a, just a further, I, he, he did this after a few years back. There was a complaint from across the pond, and he just wanted to get a permit, so when the, when the people called, or if anyone did call, they could say that he pulled a permit for the event. He would still be, uh, have to abide by the noise by law, uh, and people could still call if they thought it was excessive.
If no discussion, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, vote to approve, uh, Allen Harbor Breeze Inn Realty Trust Lodging House, seasonal renewal, 326 Lower County Road, Harwich Port.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Vote to approve Dockside Seafood Shack LLC Common Vicular's License, seasonal renewal, 715 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve Ember Inc., Ember Pizza Inc., Sunday Entertainment License Renewal, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM inside, and 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside, at 600 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Uh, Joe, I think I raised this. Uh, this is a separate action from the hearings we've asked you to, uh.
Correct.
So this no, this no, us approving this in no way affects.
Any decisions that have been rendered.
Any decisions that go through on that.
But Larry, again here, if I could, is this affected by what Megan just told us? Which?
Uh, well, I think what Megan told us was this supersedes, even though we approved this.
Well, and then we think we need to add something in here to say.
Okay, you want to?
And I, I don't know if we need to make the motion say that. I do know that when the license, the licenses are issued, we should have a memorandum in that license said that COVID-19 takes precedence over our entertainment license.
Correct.
And the governor's order, and I, and I think I would make them sign off, everybody, um, sign off that they understand until the next phase, or until the governor changes this, they have to abide by the COVID-19 rules. And we should spell that out.
Yeah.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But in addition to that one statement, I know we've gotten some emails concerning this, that until the restrictions are lifted, primarily, these guys, pretty much all of them, are going to be operating outdoors.
Yeah.
And 10 o'clock on a Sunday is kind of early, you know, for, especially since we have a noise committee that's trying to give us recommendations based on conditions the way they used to be.
So, uh, Michael?
So what, what my understanding is, we're approving the entertainment licenses and the rest of the license for the year.
Correct.
We're still going to require all of the COVID-19 monitoring, and I would also say if the noise committee ever can meet again, once this is lifted, um, they were going to come back to us with recommendations, and we would take that up, and we can always change things if we vote at a later date to change things. But this is redoing the licenses from last year.
Right.
Right.
In terms of the memo that Michael suggested, would we add that, uh, I do like adding live and recorded music, because I don't see a difference from, you know, attracting the bar crowd, the things that DPW is, or, excuse me.
So to that end, I would ask for that, that sanction from the board for me to add that. Um, I, and I don't disagree, but if I may, the, what we're talking about is a process that's entirely similar to, you had renewed a number of liquor licenses, then when we were impacted, we received a notice from ABBCC, we sent that out to all license holders. The difference here is we're not expecting any agency to give it to us, but we would do the same process.
Right.
But I would ask the board to be specific, if you're saying that live entertainment as banned by, um, the, as confirmed to be banned by DPH order, or if it's also live and recorded music, which is your right.
Amplified.
Locally. Amplify, I'm sorry.
Amplified.
Amplified, sure. And.
Can we, uh?
This is no difference when you have a DJ.
Say, you want to modify, can you, like, look at that?
I don't want to modify it. Uh, you know, normally at this point, we're, we're, we are, um, approving licenses with an entertainment, we're approving an entertainment license. The restriction of the no-live ban comes from the state. They did not specifically put in their recorded music. However, if we, if we do approve recorded music, and you go to a restaurant, you're listening to recorded music, and there is a noise violation, they're going to call the police with a noise violation.
Right.
So why further restrict them at this point outside of the, the ability to have a live ban? So I support the recorded music if we're allowed to support that.
All right.
We can go, Steve?
I, I, I didn't, you know, I think you're going to get enormous pushback if you don't, if you do try to restrict it.
I think, though.
Okay, Ed?
I just, I just don't see how you can say, well, we just decided we wanted, didn't want recorded as well as.
I'm just saying from a practical sense, you know, noise is noise, whether it's live or recorded.
But the, but the point of the, the, the state's edict is not anything to do with that.
Why she does that, sorry, that's my phone.
I think the issue is, and that, and that comes up with, when you say recorded music, there's a lot of different types of recorded music.
Sure.
There's a little bit of, you know, background schmaltzy elevator music. That's recorded music that you could barely hear, but it's not meant to, basically to cover some of the, meant to cover some of the hubbub and the clatter in, in the restaurant. But then the other side, type of recorded mu, music is the stuff that's presented by a DJ. And, and I would argue that a DJ spinning, uh, discs with all the equipment and fancy, that's actually live entertainment. He is actually modifying how it comes across, reversing the spin of the discs. He is, he is performing. And so I, I would argue that that's not recorded music.
Okay.
So.
But we have a motion now, in a second.
So, and just to, just on that, I believe that that's covered under what Megan had said, no comedians, no anything. So recorded music, to me, is not a DJ. Recorded music would fall under no comedians or, or any.
Schmaltzy background music.
Right. But I don't want to, again, we usually approve entertainment licenses with music, whether it's live or recued, or, or recorded. So why would we change that now if we don't have to?
Okay, we, uh, we have a motion in a second. Don?
Yeah, because I'm not going to favor this. I want to make sure that everybody knows why.
Okay.
Uh, the, the reason is because where they're doing this is different. In the past, the majority of what they were doing was inside. That's not going to be the case now.
Yeah.
I, I can agree with Don.
Yeah.
But when we're approving these, we're approving them one at a time. So the one I just read had the permit. So if we get to the other areas of town, and the board thinks we should have a public hearing of some sort to add music to it, then that would be the point that we would change the entertainment licenses. But in this particular case, they always have had music, so why would we take it away from them now? I understand your point in the new areas.
Yeah, and the point ultimately was that they're all interrelated, because once they're outside, it's a hodgepodge of everybody's competing music, if that whole strip has the entertainment licenses.
Well, that, that leads back to my question, this separate from the action we're already underway. But nevertheless, at, at the point now, we have a motion in a second. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And one, one opposed?
Okay, moving to J. Uh, vote to approve Sunday School Inc. Common Vicular's License, seasonal renewal, 606 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On this next one, Larry, um, I am going to have a quick conversation, and I'd, I'd rather do it now. I don't understand how we could be asked to approve a weekday entertainment and a we, a Sunday entertainment to a business next to a business that we restrict to 10:00 PM, but will allow Sunday school to go to 10:30. So my motion is going to say 10 o'clock.
Good.
To make it consistent with the neighbor. And if anyone has a problem, probably now is the time to say.
No. Is there a second?
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion to approve Sunday School Week, Weekday Entertainment, seasonal renewal. Oh, no, we already did that. Did we do that? Nope. Weekday Entertainment, seasonal renewal, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, recorded music, 606 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Uh, Don?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so everybody doesn't think I'm going temporarily insane here, uh, the music that, uh, Sunday school is typically used is exactly what Ed was describing earlier. It was just kind of quiet background, ambient music.
Yeah. Other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve Sunday School Inc. Sunday Entertainment, seasonal renewal from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Recorded music, 606 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve Phoenix Park Inc. DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, Common Vicular's License, Seasonal Renewal, 126 Route 28, West Harwich.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve Phoenix Park Inc. DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub Lodging House, Seasonal Renewal, 126 Route 28, West Harwich.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve Phoenix Park Inc. DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, Weekday Entertainment License, Seasonal Renewal, Recorded or Live Music with Amplification System and Dancing, 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM. 126 Route 28, West Harwich.
Second.
Uh, Joe?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you may recall, um, previous establishment seeking an entertainment license in the center, that went beyond midnight. Uh, this was done back in February. Um, the board had, uh, directed me to, to be mindful of that. Uh, we have Lisa O'Neill on the phone, uh, excuse me, on the teleconference. Hello, Lisa, um, who wishes to speak to this, but staff recommendation would be that you approve from 7:00 PM to midnight to be consistent with other areas. Uh, and again, you've, you've done that previous tonight, to be midnight. However, the, uh, the manager of record asked for an opportunity, uh, to come before the board to, to make the case, and that's why we have Ms. O'Neill. And I'm not sure if, um, there are others on the call related to that, but, um, we do have that person present to speak.
Okay. Thank you. The floor is yours, or the screen, as it is.
Hold on one second. I have to turn it down for all of you. Um, hang on one second.
We know she gets Channel 18.
Hi, I apologize. I just, we, we're all, what, we, I have three computers in my house, and we're, and we're, we're joining. So Brendan O'Reilly is here with me, my husband Dan O'Neill is here with me. Um, so we were, um, I guess I'm caught off guard. I'm sorry. So we, I was, um, we were surprised that our, our, our seasonal license was, uh, the entertainment license was cut back till 12:00 AM. Um, you, if you, um, if you know the Irish pub, we, most of our business is done between 10:00 PM and, and 12:30 AM. So cutting back on the, the, um, having the ban stop at midnight was, we thought it was financially detrimental. Um, I, you know, I can answer questions you may have. Do you want to add, Brendan, do you want to add anything?
What are you, yep. Um, if you can hear him, this is Brendan O'Reilly. Uh, net licenses, we don't, same thing for, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Brendan's going to speak now.
Okay. Now, we've had that license for quite some time, and it's absolutely necessary that you should stay to one park. If you stop the band, throw the parkers, anybody knows, uh, once the band stops, show's over, people leave. If you're joined, it's different set of rules, then they're just going to be gone. It will be a business. And in terms of, if you're worried about, I used to have a protocol, in terms of quieting down, I think we have a very stringent, very consistent way of shutting that place down, uh, for years and years and years. That's how we've managed to be in control of it. So cutting it back for us, it being the mainstay of the income, uh, I'm afraid we'd just finish it. So I'd appreciate it if it stays just like it is.
Yeah, so I think, you know.
Forty years.
Yeah, we, for forty years, and we, and we work, you know, we take that in, and we work really hard to, uh, to manage it. And I think that we, um, you know, it's, it's hard, it's, um, A, in this business, of course, there are, there are challenges, but, um, I would say, especially now, take away that portion of our income will, will really impact us. Um, and then, just because we do know how the big, you know, we know how bands work, and, and Dan and Brendan are actually in a band. So we do know that the ban does have a lot to do with, um, the reactions of the crowd. And, and believe me, we have used, we have told bands to stop, um, just so we can bring the crowd down. We're trained, we're, you know, we're certified, we're tip certified. We, we have, um, we have, you know, serve safe. We have, um, we have, uh, on a Friday night, perhaps we have, I don't know, um, 12 doorman. Um, and so we really take it very seriously. Um, we, um, we staff, when we, when we do close, we staff the parking lot, so it's a, it's a, you know, a, a quiet exit. So we really do consider all these things. Um, and so I am afraid that if, when the band stops at 12 o'clock, I'm afraid that people will leave. Um, and I'm, then I'm afraid that people will say, don't go, don't go to the Irish pub. Um, it's, it's, you know, the band stops too early. And so, and Dennisport is right down the street, and I just picture those, you know, those, and, and believe me, I know, like, it's pennies on the dollar, the sales tax that, that goes to, to, to Harwich, but it, it, you know, we do contribute something. So, and there's just so many reasons that.
You made your point.
We feel strongly that a 1:00 AM license, um, should be awarded to us.
Okay, thank you.
And we work hard to keep it. We work very hard to keep it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Don?
She can out-talk me.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's not so much a question, uh, it is a statement. Is, these times mean something. I mean, they're related to the environment, to the community. So I have a question. When's the last time we received a complaint, uh, about, uh, the Irish pub?
Not my memory.
Not in my memory.
Michael?
So just to add to that, I did send an email, obviously, earlier this week, um, and there was some concern over this email to me, and I think I forwarded that concern to Joe. But I definitely sent an email to the chair. When we talked about the noise, uh, the police chief came in. It was related to Harwich Port, and it was related to how many businesses were in that area, and the reason why we would control that. When we talked about the clatter, uh, which has a new name now, the, the neighbors came out, strong support not to keep that open, and there was a lot of reasons and science behind it. And that, my point in the email, and I'm not sure how much I got into it, we don't have that same complaint here.
Yeah, I would agree.
And, and we have never talked about this. And I, and I understand and appreciate Joe trying to keep them consistent. And the boards had the conversation about keeping things consistent, especially licenses. But we never have, we have never sat and debated this and made a rule that they have to be midnight. So I would certainly support issuing this license until 1:00 AM.
Uh, right now, uh, we have a, a motion in a second. Joe?
I just want to put it out there, the only reason I acted in the manner in which I did was, uh, the, the meeting in, uh, January and February related to the Seal Pub in the center of town. town. Statement was made by members, staff, and others that were trying to be consistent with that timeframe. So I would suggest that we would probably get a very quick notice of appeal of their license because we did use that in factoring their request.
Yeah, no, his point, but Michael and then Ed.
And I would, I think that that's a, that would be a great argument. However, at that point, that business changed hands, and they were changing, they were changing uses of the building, and I would stand by that decision in making that 12, whether they appeal it or not. This business, they're going on their 40th year, as they said, and we are not getting the complaints, there's no change of use, and I don't believe right now we should just arbitrarily change it. And if it sells, then maybe we bring it back and say we're going to make them consistent.
Ed?
And also, I know in the past history of this business, there was a time where the neighbors did complain about noise from it, but they analyzed their facility, made huge investments to tighten up the facility to keep the noise contained within, within the hall, and have been doing so successfully for, I don't know, when did you, when did you put in the air conditioning system and close up all the windows? I mean, that was what, 35 years ago?
I don't know, yeah, maybe, it'd be like 20 years ago. Yeah, and we worked hard at that. I mean, please know that we, we take it also very seriously, and we're proud of what we do. So when there is some, there is a complaint, we certainly take it to heart, and we want it, and we want to be, you know, a positive part of the community.
Steve?
Yeah, I, you know, I would agree with, with Michael and Ed's comments, and I'm sure that deep in Joe Power's Irish heart, he would, he would like this the same way. So I, I think we should support it.
Do you want to make an amendment to the motion, or do you want to just withdraw it and recast it?
No, no, the motion was made until 1:00.
It is still 1:00?
Yeah, no, I want, I think, Joe, we appreciate your efforts in trying to follow our directives, but there you go. We have a motion-
May I say one thing for the record?
Sure.
As to my Irish lineage, Lisa and I spoke about that at length, so I think she knows where my heart lies, and whatever the board does, I will gladly support.
Mine's in County Kerry.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's always the exception that approves the rule.
Okay.
I move that we approve the Port Restaurant and Bar, Inc., Sunday Entertainment License Renewal, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside and 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside, 541 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, so.
Mike, did you, we did the Cape Cod Irish Pub weekday entertainment license to 1:00 a.m. You want to do the Sunday?
I do. Vote to approve Phoenix Park, Inc., DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, Sunday Entertainment License Seasonal Renewal, Recorded or Live Music with Dancing, 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., 126 Route 28, West Harwich.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa and Brendan and gang, I think you're all set then.
Okay, vote.
Very appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll just get open.
All right. Vote to approve Windsong Antiques, Inc., Junk Dealer, Seasonal Renewal, 364 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second. Don?
Before you go too far here, guys, there's a Scribner's error on this, which I think would allow us to continue to vote on it, but she does not currently hold a seasonal permit, that she did not apply for one, according to the packet, and this is merely a renewal of an existing year-round-
Okay.
-permit. And it does say renewal, so I mean, the-
Want me to rephrase the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Vote to approve Windsong Antiques, Inc., Junk Dealer, Renewal, 364 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Any other discussion? Don, does that-
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. I think this one calls for some discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next three items are far different from what we went through. I can see our finance director is on the call, so I would turn it over to her at this point for the discussion and review of FY '20 revenue and '21 forecast and the following item.
Good evening, everyone. We have lots of numbers to review. I hope you're excited about that. So I have prepared some documentation for you with actual results through the end of May of this fiscal year, and then an estimation for June for revenues and expenditures. These are just for the operating budget or the general fund. This shows a potential estimated surplus revenue of just over $500,000, little over $500,000. Your, I'll tell you that the golf revenues have started coming in very strong, your disposal revenues are strong, your tax receipts for real estate and personal property for the fourth quarter are as strong as they were last year. That's not what we were anticipating originally. The areas where we're seeing reduction in revenue are hotel and motel tax, meals tax, in addition to motor vehicles. So I don't think a lot of folks are purchasing motor vehicles right now. But for FY '20, we're definitely projecting a surplus in revenue. Do you want me to stop here and answer questions first, or do you want me to go ahead and move on to expenditures?
Let's give a break and just see if there's any questions from anyone on this.
Yeah.
On the, the sheet that you gave us, in your report in June 11th, on the first page of the numbers, it, what I can see, it says 2019 budget is the first column, whatever is before that, I can only get bits and pieces of the words. So is, are each of the rows identified as a different revenue source?
Correct. They're identified as, I'm sorry, you can't see that.
Yeah, I can.
They're, they're identified as departmental revenue sources such as selectmen revenue, assessor revenue, treasurer revenue, those categories.
Can't get that field in line.
So to summarize, you're estimating for fiscal year '20, we'll have a surplus of $500,000 moving into fiscal year '21?
In revenues, in a surplus in revenues, yes.
Plus or minus? Okay, move ahead then.
So your departments have certainly come to the table to adhere to your essential only spending requirements. We didn't know how much this pandemic was going to cost us. We didn't know funding sources, and so the board of selectmen froze the budget based on our recommendations for you to do so. We've certainly got funding sources that have come to the table. In addition to that, your departments have really held off on spending.
Yeah.
So I have an expenditure report here through fiscal, through the period of May 31st, with estimations of spending through June. At this point, and these are early estimations, and this is based on the current state of a spending freeze, we're looking at just over $2.1 million in surplus of expenditures. And that is by, this is listed by department. For example, golf is a separate department than recreation is, and the police is, or other public safety measures. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine is more of a comment than it is a question. Anything that doesn't get appropriated and expended this year winds up becoming free cash for next year. Nothing has changed in our thinking in terms of the cliff we were thinking we were going to go off, and this is the result of us slamming the brakes on, to staff, asking them to not do anything unless they absolutely had to. We put a hiring freeze in, we brought together our department heads to ask their cooperation to have discussions about where we could find money to operate. It's going to be really important to us to have that free cash, so, I would not consider this to be terrific news overall unless you put it in the context of it's going to help us next year. This isn't a time for everybody to let off on saving money in the town.
Yeah. Yep. Any other comments? Thank you, Don. Michael?
I just think we did impose the freeze, but thank the department heads for not spending and feeling some of the pain. I, hats off, I think they did an outstanding job, and Carol's direction is great, and Joe's direction is great, and I'm glad we had the freeze, and this is very positive.
I agree. If you look at the, I agree, if you look at the chart, every single department head has spent less than their budget, which is all we ask for in preparation for next year. So Carol, I guess we'll move into next year then, in the 1/12 budget discussion.
I've attended numerous webinars and numerous conversations with the Department of Revenue with regard to the 1/12 budget, which is really what they call a monthly spending plan. That monthly spending plan has to be, they'll take FY '20's amount that was raised on the tax recap, and with very minor changes, divided by 12, and your monthly spending plan has to be at least that amount. So with that, I worked with all of the departments in the town to come up with the FY '21 kind of overall 1/12 budget for the entire year. And then I analyzed the spending that happened in July, August, and September, and October for '19, FY '19, and FY '20, because we know FY '20, the summer of FY '20, wasn't quite normal either with the tornado that happened. So I used both years to make this estimation. We'll see that we do have a significant, well, my mind, a significant deficit with regard to revenue, of just over $2.2 million. Those, that deficit is in the area of hotel, motel, meals tax, motor vehicle. I do think folks are going to pay their taxes, it was very strong this year. I mean, we're 98% collected last week, and I expect that to go stronger as the board has allowed for folks to waive interest and penalties through June 29. So I expect that we'll see some strong revenues coming in for the remainder of the month. Our beach sticker sales are very busy, as well as disposal. And your other disposal revenue in the area, commercial MSW, commercial C and D, is strong, it's very strong. As the golf course continues to open, you're going to see greens fees coming in. I've pulled back on my early estimations of where we were going to be in golf for FY '21. So your, the areas where I think that we're going to have some challenge, and maybe some discussions, and maybe some changes on the estimation of revenue are the ones that I kind of highlighted. And in addition to that, I really backed down on investment revenue because I'm not really sure where the market's going to be. So at this point, I was able to, and I gave you an early, very early calculation, and this has already changed, of the 1/12 budgets. I gave it to you for three months in your packet. I have revised that to, I revised it on Friday to include October because just in case something happens in September. I reached out to the Department of Revenue, shared the format with them, I got some feedback today. And so I did provide a revised 1/12 budgets for the four months that I hope that you're going to discuss at your meeting next week. So I don't, certainly don't anticipate you voting this tonight, but I wanted to be able to provide you with some early numbers so that you could see them, and we're accustomed to seeing information like this because frankly, none of us are, and this is all new to everyone. It's even new to most of the people at the Department of Revenue. So we receive updates on a daily basis and are in constant communication with the folks out of the Boston office.
Carol, what kind of, what, what kind of updates do you get that, that changes these figures?
So the last update that we received last Friday morning, I believe, was the, this, there's a subtraction of free cash from the amount that was voted on the 2020 tax recap. So the only amount that we can remove from free, from this calculation is the free cash that was appropriated for FY '19, and that would have been snow and ice. So originally, we were thinking that all of the free cash was going to be removed from that calculation, but no, that's not correct. So that was the most important information that I received. And then in addition to that, I originally put, when, so let me back up a little bit. When I was analyzing a month and I couldn't get to 1/12 of the FY '20 amount that was calculated, I put it in Finance Committee Reserve. Today, I heard from the Department of Revenue that they would prefer to have it in an elected board's line instead of a committee that was not elected by the general public. So those were the most important changes that I've just learned in the past couple of days.
Carol, just an observation and a question, when you look at, I'm looking at what you handed out, the expenses line for July, the 1/12 budget is $123,000. In August, it jumps to $193,000, and then that pattern repeats itself. Why isn't that, what, why does that vary during the months, not constant?
Because we have some expenses that we expend one time a year, or it could be multiple time a year, not times a year, such as the regional school district assessments. So I made sure that when I was analyzing it, I accounted for those items. So you will also see-
This is just dividing-
I'm sorry.
This isn't as simple as just dividing the annual budget by 12, you're taking into specific numbers as well.
Correct. I analyzed the four months of spending over the past two years to find, just to identify one-time items that were expended, historically expended, because we had items that became due, such as Barnstable County Retirement. Barnstable County Retirement is due in July, we make that payment in July, otherwise we have to pay interest. So I included that in the July column for the monthly spending plan. I also included property and liability insurance that we also pay in July because we receive a significant reduction or credit when we make that payment on an annual basis.
Because, you know, this is more complex than just a simple 1/12.
Well, yeah.
Ed? And Steve?
But in, in the top section, the general government section, salaries and wages are consistent across, capital outlay is consistent across, but expenses, it's, there's 123 in July, 193 in August, 120, what's, what's the $70,000 added expense to general government every other month?
I have to get that for you because I don't have the details, I'm so sorry. I don't have the details in front of me, I, but I can tell you that there are, I can provide that for you for next week.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Other questions for Carol on this?
I, I think we knew this was going to be a complex effort in order to do this 1/12, and, you know, this is a very good analysis. It's, I think, actually, it's an analysis that helps us all to understand better what the budget looks like anyway, but I just want to say thank you to Carol, and all those who, who helped her pull this together. And I know every month, we're going to have to be reviewing this continuously to make sure that we're doing this correctly in conjunction- in conjunction with what the state wants us to do. So thank you, Carol.
Hey, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carol, I just want to make sure in my own head that we've covered everything. So far this year in administration, you were carrying a town administrator's salary for someone who's not here. And then we've had Joe filling in for eight months, basically, at his lower rate. Someday, we're going to actually have an administrative office with full capacity, with administrator, assistant town administrator. Does that reflect that in here, that there'd be a whole office at roughly the pay scales that were commensurate with the positions they were occupying?
Correct. I listened to your meeting with regard to the pay range for your new town administrator, whoever that may be. And I used that pay rate, I used the figure there that you, the board had come up with when I computed administration portion of the FY '21 budget. I also included the appropriate salaries for all the other staff members.
Can I say that, Don?
Yeah, because I was just taking note that we were saving 50 grand a year based on.
And the save points, I guess you will update these on four-month cycles each monthly now until we determine a budget.
So I would, I'm hoping, so the water commissioners voted their budget separate last week, and they voted only July's budget. There are communities that are voting all of the monthly budgets, monthly spending plans, I should say, in an effort to, I guess, speed up the approval at the Department of Revenue. So what I was hoping for next week is to be able to provide you with July's and then your early meeting in July to be able to provide you with the other three months, which I don't think are going to change very much from what you see here, and that we could get those approved from the Department of Revenue, just so that you have a plan in place. Certainly, we can take it on a month-by-month basis if that's what you prefer.
And of course, we hope we have a September meeting that we'll have a budget at that point. But Steve, did you have another comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. So I guess, Michael, you okay?
I'm good.
Because I guess then on, next week, we'll get some more refinement. But great effort, Carol. Joe, any comment on this? Or you're just, you're adding it up? You're looking at papers?
No, I'm trying to keep all my pages together. Was there action on the rescinding the hiring and spending freezes?
We haven't got to that yet.
That's next.
Not to that yet. That's actually, we haven't really got to that discussion yet, Joe.
I guess my only question. Carol, are you going to be in Town Hall at any time this week?
Oh, yes, all week.
Okay. I am bringing in my computer because I can't seem to get, or somehow, your spreadsheet. So I don't, I get all the numbers, but I don't get the description of what it is. It's all sort of cut off. I don't know why.
Is it helpful if I send you a PDF?
Well, this says it's a PDF.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe, but I'm not conversant enough to really know if that would be helpful.
Okay, sure. Anytime.
Thank you, Carol. With that, and Joe, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
This again would be for the Finance Director.
Finance Director, okay.
Finance Director on the chair had a brief email exchange on recommendation to rescind the hiring and spending freezes. So it's fiscal year 2020, not 2020-01.
Yeah, Carol, you want to expand on that?
I think, as I mentioned before, your department heads have done a fantastic job at just hunkering down and not spending anything that wasn't absolutely essential. They're in great need of supplies, of office supplies, in great need of making some repairs. And I'm not talking about, you know, spending down that $2 million. I don't, I just think that your, the departments need some relief at this point in time in order to let, allow them to finish FY '20 in a manner in which it's productive and just to be able to start FY '21 with some, you know, it can be paper or, you know, copy paper or printing cartridges or minor repairs that they need to make to, you know, a piece of equipment. But I think it would be prudent, honestly, to allow them to that ability to provide those services or those supplies to these departments.
And Carol did the email, and I thought that, you know, we have a hiring freeze, but I'm getting some feedback where we've stymied some of our departments just for lack of supplies. And we should open that up a little bit. Michael?
Why don't we ask for a request without looking at a request? I'm not willing to vote on lifting or rescinding anything without an idea of exactly what we're talking about. And I'm surely sympathetic to the department heads and the departments. And I think that there's probably many instances where people need cartridges and paper and other things. But I think this board needs to be very aware that we have a very deep hole that we're about to face. And we've all made the commitment to try not to lose any bodies. So I think that the hiring freeze and the buying freeze should stay on. But I would entertain us looking at, through Carol, through Joe, a memo from each department head stating what they need and what the costs are going to be.
I have no problem with that, as long as we have an option to do the smart thing, that we don't stop them from doing.
Of course.
So can I just add a comment?
Yep.
So the department heads have been contacting me when they, and Joe, when they have a real compelling need to purchase something. Sometimes they contact me directly, and if they can, I guess, provide such a compelling argument, I've said, yeah, go ahead, you know. If you, if it's a safety issue, if it's, you know, a matter in which a town asset would be harmed by not making a repair or making a purchase, then I've been allowing it. It's been minimal. So personally, I think that we can manage it internally unless you really, the board would really like to be involved. Because we have been managing it very well.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not a disparagement of Carol or Joe, but this was a policy. It wasn't delegated to anybody. So when we froze this, I agree with Michael. If we're going to be doing this, we need to have a specific request in front of us, unless it's an exigency where there's public safety involved or it's going to ruin some other asset that we have. Other than that, we're going to have a cliff that we're going over next year. And I think that we're the ones that are going to take the responsibility for making sure the town operates. So we should be involved in any decision that loosens up what we have already voted.
So Carol, possibly you could package those requests and keep us informed and approve those going forward then. Michael?
Well, I'd say that, not looking to delay anybody, why can't we have a weekly line item with purchase requests in our packet? And just look at them. I don't want to micromanage either, and maybe there's a system that Carol and Joe can come up with, and there's an amount that the board can approve.
Ed?
I don't want to sit here and go through a rass of purchase order requests for three reams of copy paper and half a dozen boxes of staples. I mean, that's, I mean, that's not what we're, the level that we've been elected to oversee.
Are people comfortable as an expense level that we could move ahead with? Joe?
So if I can add to what Carol said, if you recall back in late March, we had our virtual, completely virtual and remote meeting where the board directed Carol and I and Megan to make determinations if it were essential. And Carol's correct that that's how we've done it. My concern with rescinding either of these freezes, and I do want to talk in a moment about hiring because most of what everyone's talked about has been spending. I feel comfortable that we have a process in place already. We have a department head meeting scheduled for Wednesday anyway, so Carol and I can reach out to staff and let them know that, you know, they can start ramping up less-than-essential purchases for consideration. And so it ties into what we've been doing for the last four months, but doesn't unnecessarily burden the board. Beyond that, my concern is the second part of that, and that's hiring freeze removal. Because I think that's a far greater, there are far greater implications with that.
Yeah, I would agree. That's a different subject. Is, Michael, you have another comment?
I think to what Joe just said and what Ed said, by no means do I want to talk about paper either. But we have to keep track of the finances. I'm fine with Carol and Joe ramping up some of it as long as they are very essential purchases.
Let's leave it to their discretion, I think, is the way to do that. Ed?
And, you know, and as to hiring, you know, we, any hiring, we have up to 14 days to not approve it, you know?
Four-fifths vote, yep.
I mean, we have the ability to stop that from happening. And we just need to, rather than putting a, you know, in my mind, a mandatory freeze on, we just need to be cognizant of it and take action.
But, Mr. Chair?
Don?
I just want to reiterate, it's not a discussion that we just started tonight. We voted to impose both of those freezes.
Right.
So if we lighten up, it should be based on what we want to see happen. Because otherwise, we'd have to vote again to rescind our previous vote. And I don't think anybody's got the stomach for that with the unknown about what our revenue stream is going to be next year. Nobody at this table knows what this summer is going to look like, and we do get a lot of meals, rooms tax money that we're probably not going to see.
Joe, I think what we are then is you and Carol following through on the expense side, and we're positioned, hasn't changed on the hiring.
Understood.
Okay, is that, Michael?
You said the second part of what you just said. I get the first part. What about the hiring?
We haven't changed our position on hiring.
With that said, we haven't heard yet whether or not there's a position that you're thinking about or a position that led to this line item. Are there positions in public safety, border health, absolutely essential positions that we need? And certainly being sensitive to the fact that our shortfall, and we don't want to hire people to lay them off five months later.
No, Sid, if I may, to that question, that gives staff an opportunity for us to reexamine where we are now versus then to say, and I'm thinking immediately of dispatch, you know, that was a position that could have been hired right on the cusp of what we were doing. So I can go back out to staff and say, where are the critical hirings? Because if we bring someone in, just knowing how the process is, we're in the middle of June, whoever we bring in, we're not going to bring in before July 1st. So whoever we bring in is a fiscal year '21 impact directly.
Michael?
And, you know, if Joe and the various department heads have some thoughts on hiring that they want us to hear, that they want to talk about with that, that's fine, you know. We'll be more than willing to entertain that. But in the meantime, we have the freeze on. But, you know, there's no reason someone, as a department head, couldn't come to Joe and say, look, we're really, this is why, this is why it makes sense, you know, economically and everything, then the board will consider it.
Michael, you have a comment?
Yeah, so Joe brought up dispatch. I asked for it before. I'll ask again. I'd like to understand where we are with overtime related to dispatch. When I brought that up and we had the discussion about it, the chief didn't think that we needed a dispatcher at the time and made a compelling case why not. The difference between a patrolman going in and covering dispatch versus hiring a dispatcher, there's quite a difference there. So if we're paying an overtime rate to have a patrolman in there, and that's a number that I've asked for, so I would like to see where we're at since that person left, to see if it makes sense for the board to push for a dispatcher.
And even with our hiring concerns, we've had, tonight, we were presented by the health team that you mentioned, three concerns that we may need to address in terms of health, occupational safety, and custodians, and so.
And if I can just very quickly, as an update, there had been discussion previously about the outreach coordinator position and council on aging. And several weeks ago, Megan, as the board had directed, reached out to different resources. And I'm happy to say that Emily was able to partner with, I believe it's through Boston University, but outreach coordinator, separate from the position, and it's covered. So that was a great example where we had a need anyway, but we were able to fill it separately. So even though we may want to fill that in the future, there's less pressure to fill that now.
That's great.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
So if in two weeks, we get a report that warrants hiring a dispatcher, say, so we will then move to rescind the freeze, make the hire, and then reestablish the freeze?
An exception to the freeze.
Make an exception to the freeze.
Well, I would ask you, Ed.
Yeah.
I think you have, there was a point you were trying to make there.
Yeah.
If we're spending $60,000 in overtime and a dispatcher will cost us 38, do you suggest that we continue spending $60,000 for the dispatcher?
No, I just, at this going forward, I would just suggest that rather than having an outright freeze, which basically, in my history in government, when you had a freeze, it was a freeze. You didn't even propose something that we make hiring subject to approval on an individual basis by the board.
Let's see where we go next. We may have to do that. The next item on the discussion I put in, I really don't envision a big discussion on it, but, you know, I've gotten some feedback on discommunication and so on. And I think that, and Joe and I have talked about it, I think it's reopen and move away some from being only, almost thinking about the flu. We start looking about how we're communicating with residents, updating that, the department heads, and so on. So it's an ongoing discussion, and that's the only thing, just we're going into a new phase here, I think, as we move forward. Don?
I do feel compelled to say that, again, there's no full office down there. And whatever our expectations are, you can press a button, but if it's not hooked up to electricity, it's not going to turn anything on. So we've got one acting town administrator interim. We got another guy who's there two days a week, and we got two new staff members who replaced Sandy and Ann. So it's not the same as it was last year, and I'll tell you what, the response time I'm getting is better than last year, even when all those people were there.
I just want to be cognizant that we're moving forward. Any other, Michael?
I just would add the comments from some department heads and some taxpayers. And I think I agree with Don as far as the newness downstairs. But at some point, we have to, you know, the interim town administrator's job is to run the town. The decision was made by this board to put a two-day-a-week person in that office. The decision was made by Joe on the hire, one of the administrative assistants, and one came with it. I'm confused, completely confused, with who works for the Board of Selectmen. As far as, you know, I got accused of sending mundane emails at one point, and I got accused, you know, blatantly with nobody actually knowing the facts of what it was and the fact that it was asked in public meetings. But I got accused of that, and it's my understanding that there's a rule that the administrative assistants don't release anything to the board without the administrator's approval. So do we, and my confusion is, do we have an administrative assistant as a Board of Selectmen? Or does the administrative assistant work for the town administrator, and then everything goes back? goes back there, and then they wait for an answer, and they get back to us? Now, Don just said that he gets his answers quicker than he had them last year. Well, after that conversation that we all had about my emails, I don't ask for anything, unless I ask in a public meeting. But apparently, other board members ask and get their answers. So where do I go for my answers? And can Patty or Danielle answer questions directly and get us information quicker than us having to wait for a, a week? So if I could get a clarification on what we have for support staff, I'd love to have it.
Do I have any comment? Because I don't think it's changed that much, but go ahead.
Well, yeah, a few comments. First of all, I have not hired any staff in that administration department. I think the reference is to Danielle Delaney, who was brought in as a, as a temp, she remains a temp. There was a position that was open, but the position that was open has not been filled because it was right before the hiring freeze, and the decision was made by the board to include that position in the hiring freeze. So anyone that's there has been there since I've been there, with the exception of Bob Lawton, obviously. And the board brought Mr. Lawton in on my recommendation, because I knew I wouldn't have the capacity to do interim town administrator and act, and assistant town administrator. And Bob Lawton, two days, is as good as anyone full-time, but he's limited because he's two days. There is no directive to staff to ignore the board in any way, shape, or form. And I would speak as their past HR director and say that the roles that are down there are executive assistant to the TA and the Board of Selectmen. So I don't want to get into a discussion of employee work habits, because they'd be denied their rights to defend themselves. But the positions are executive assistant to the TA and the board, and presently, just temporary assistant, who was meant to cover for the support staff supervisor, and working on trying to correct what I think are errors in operational structure. But we've got a hiring freeze.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. The, Joe, thank you for clarifying the part-time assistant, you not hiring. I think my question before was, we hired a part-time temporary, and then we upped to a full-time temporary, which we absolutely needed to do.
Right, that was back in January.
That was your decision, just?
It, it was approved by the board. I didn't have the authority to do it.
But you brought it. We, so you did change a position, and that's fine. We absolutely need it. The Bob Lawton, two days a week, is as good as anyone else for a full week, is a great comment, because to Don's point, you know, he was trying to say how understaffed we are down there. And I think when it comes down to it, I'm getting a fair amount of complaints from residents that we're not answering them back. And you probably don't have time to answer them back. But who can?
Yeah.
And, and that's, so, I read this line item as, the board can make some decisions on prioritizing things.
Yeah.
Now, COVID-19 is obviously the most important, and then there's a whole list of things that you do that are more important than others. But is there somebody that can get back to these people in a, in a more reasonable amount of time, or at all?
Let me turn to Joe first, and then Don.
I'm, I'm loath to have this conversation in this manner, but we've all worked in environments, and we know that. You plan your day, and then the day happens and you react. But as an example, reacting to several different items that occurred on Friday that diverted my attention from the agenda packet, had every intention of following up on that this morning. And within minutes of getting into the office, being told that the governor has announced that there are going to be 50 pop-up sites. We're working in a state of emergency and a pandemic, and nobody wants to return to, quote, "normal" any more than I do. But when you have a situation like a pop-up testing center that could impact upon 1,500 people during the middle of the week, directly in front of our harbor, that took up two-thirds of my day today. So in the last three weeks, I've dealt with pop-up, protest, pandemic. None of those things were scheduled, and the pandemic changes every day. So there has to be an understanding that there's not a willful intent to not communicate. On the contrary, we're trying to communicate as much as we can. But I have to react to how the day comes, and today, as an example, is an exceedingly difficult day to get regular stuff done.
Michael, and then we'll?
And just, just, so we're clear, before this pops up on social media tomorrow as another attack, Joe, I was only asking, and asking the board, based on what it says, prioritization, is there somebody else that isn't necessarily at work? Is there somebody else that can do some of this, Joe? Because clearly, and you're doing a ton, so I'm not saying that you're not. Is there somebody that the board or the administrator can look at in the building that may not be back to work full-time that can do some of this to get some of these answers? That's my question.
And I think that, Don, I think that's, that's another continuing discussion. Is there a, and I'm leaving to Joe and his management, but are there a delegation of different department heads that should be thrown out quicker? And just let them respond to some of these, it would take some workload off? I think we could look at that some. You know, my, the governor takes top priority, but maybe we need to be sure we come back to the town business, and we're starting to move away from this, get a little more comfortable with full-time. That's why I said moving ahead. One last comment. Since I've been involved with Harwich, you know, town government, the admins downstairs have, from the management side, have reported to the town administrator. But they've answered our questions. So we need to be sure that comes back so that there's, and I know Joe sometimes steps in because he wants to be sure that he can, we get our answers correctly done, which is fair enough, because sometimes, but, you know, I don't think that's changed. We, we lack, as Don's mentioned, unfortunately or fortunately, I, we don't have people down there who have 10, 20 years of experience, which, you know, could respond to a lot of these things that newer people don't have the background or experience in some cases, even though they're trying hard. But, Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that Joe was being extraordinarily gracious here, because it'd be kind of like Batman and Robin, where Robin only works two days a week. Unless I'm not aware of something, is the interim assistant town administrator on call? Or is it just two days a week in the main?
Bob is present Mondays and Wednesdays, and I know, well, I, I believe he does far more work beyond that.
Oh, I get that. I'm just saying that no matter how smart, no matter how good, no matter how motivated somebody is, if they're not there, they, they're not answering questions, which is really what precipitated this discussion. So I just, I don't want the public to misunderstand. It's not like we have, you know, untapped capacity in the office.
These, these conversations, I was a little tempted not to put this on, because I didn't want to turn negative. And I think we have it. I, I think there's tremendous amount of work. I'm always cognizant that we need to be sure we're moving forward and getting the job done.
Let me, let me just say one thing if I might, Mr. Chair. You know, the, the assistant or the interim town administrator or town administrator position clearly reports to a board of elected officials. And were I to be in the position, I would want to basically know who's saying what to the elected officials. And, you know, that doesn't mean you control every ounce of communication. I agree that we need to have, get responses ourselves, and the, the problem is that we're now in, what Joe pointed out, in a situation where we've got all these crises swirling around our heads. But in a normal situation, I would think that, and hopefully we'll be back there someday, we, we should understand that a good, a good town administrator should be able to know what's being said, what answers are being given, what guidance is being given to the selectmen on any issue, no matter what it is. Because he's going to be called to the floor on it, or she's going to be called to the floor on it every time. So, you know, it's just, it's just a running commentary on this, I know, but I, I think it's an important component of what we all need to understand as we continue to make our decisions about who's going to lead this town.
Okay, good. This discussion is meant to be a checkpoint, so thank you much. We've done that. Ed?
You know, my, my request to the office staff have al, have always been requests for information, you know, copies of minutes of meetings passed, of reports, because there's something that I'm interested in looking into and may, or may not, depending on what, you know, past information says, may, may engender an item I want to bring up to the full board. But they're not the sorts of requests that is making a comment on a policy or a procedure or asking for an opinion on whether we are doing things right or wrong. It's simply the staff in the office, they oversee all of our documents and know where they are. You don't want me anywhere near rummaging through files, because I don't keep files well, but they do, and they know where all that is. And I, you know, to, to have those sorts of requests bogged down the town administrator or the assistant town administrator, I don't think is, you know, where, where their time should be at. In, in cases where you want to have a policy discussion, you go to the administrator directly. And I think that's worked for years.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Okay, I think we've covered this. Joe, we'll move to old business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to get my packet updated. There we go. So update on the expansion of outdoor services. This is really just to advise everybody where we're at. I think the board was made aware of it, and I, I don't believe anything has changed today regarding the three establishments that aren't highlighted. Really, I think the point from last week was, I think it was 14 establishments had expanded outdoor services, and in some cases, had expanded outdoor alcohol service within two business days. And again, I thank staff and everybody for their patience and the way in which we proceeded through that, and that's my update.
Okay. Any questions on this? Again, I think we're all patting ourselves on the back for other people doing good work, but we got the restaurants, old restaurants?
Mr. Chairman?
Time fashion. Scott?
Yes, sir. We do have one person on the line requesting to speak to this, Carol Porter, and I do see her on the line. So Ms. Porter, if you're on your phone at 6:00, if you're on your computer, you, microphone, icon at the bottom of your screen.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name's Carol Porter. Hi, Mr. Chairman, Board, and everyone. I'm Carol Porter. I'm a resident of Harwich Port here. And what, first of all, I want to say that you, thank everyone for doing the great job you're doing, and all the hard work, you know, to keep us safe, to keep the town running, to keep the businesses going. I actually, I thought this was a really upbeat meeting. You're succeeding. Thank you. And, but what I want to speak to is, as a resident of Harwich, I just, who just wants to park safely so I can shop and dine in Harwich Port. And I saw on the news this week that Lieutenant Governor Karen Colito said that the state is offering grants to municipalities to improve sidewalk streets and parking lots, to, you know, allow businesses to continue to do their business during this, the restrictions. And so I was wondering if Harwich was going to make use of this offer, and like how it could be used to increase parking. And I was particularly thinking of Harwich Port. I can't safely park sometimes with my grandkids and go to the store in Harwich Port, because that schoolhouse parking lot is full. And I know there's more room there for more spots, and I know it's a difficult issue because of neighbors, but I was wondering if with a grant opportunity, if that would allow us to somehow, I don't know, put grassing or something and use, use certain areas only at certain times or something, just use some way to get a grant to pay for it.
Thank you, Carol, for that comment. I think, Joe, you've explored partially.
Actually, yes, and thanks to Ms. Porter for bringing that up. As you know, I have, I participate in a weekly call on Tuesdays with Lieutenant Governor. Two weeks ago, she made reference to the program, or one of the programs that I think Ms. Porter's talking about, where it's, I think it's along the lines of safer streets. And it's, it's reexamining how we use our street sidewalks and everything else in relation to the pandemic. So we have that material, and staff and I are still going through it. There's a follow-up call tomorrow with the Lieutenant Governor, is going to give more information. So we are aware of those. We haven't gone into it full bore yet, but we should in very short order.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Carol, does that help?
Thank you. Yes. I'll, I'll keep an eye out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make the next two motions?
You can.
Thank you. I move that we approve the bid award to Sprague Operating Resources LLC for gasoline, diesel, fuel, and heating oil.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, just one, I just wanted to point out to the public that that's a $150,000 savings, estimated savings to the town this year in fuel costs.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve Harwich Phase II Contract One, Robert B. Hour, Sewer Construction Project, RFI 24 request for change, $2,695.87.
Second. This was a change on, I think, Michael, you, you want to read it, but it's a change to allow water service in East Harwich on Turf Street and 137 to avoid some of the cutoff that they were planning on doing, which Joe stopped them because it was, felt it was unfair to shut the water off, and we were told to all stay inside. Thank you, Joe, for that. But, so they're moving ahead.
And that's paid for out of the 5% contingency that was voted, and there's $435,000-ish left in that account.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, C, you want to vote out?
I have some questions on it.
Okay.
So if you want to make the motion first, then we can discuss it afterwards.
Go ahead.
So move to approve bid award for printing of tax and all other town bills.
Second.
All right, so discussion, what have we done in the past? And why are we going to this now? And what's the cost of doing it in-house, if that's what we've done in the past?
Maybe Joe or Carol. I thought we always contracted this out. Carol?
We have always contracted this out, but I've noticed this year is that we've never gone out to bid for it, and that's a requirement. So we did go out to bid for it. We prepared an RFP, sent it out to potential bidders. We received two responses. The lowest responsive bidder is our current vendor, and so that is why this is on the agenda for you this evening.
And Carol, what was the, what's the cost difference between this new contract done the right way and what we had done in the past?
It's, I believe it's the same cost as that they have charged us in the past. No difference. It's just that we wanted to comply with procurement laws.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make this motion as well. Move to approve coastal engineering contract for annual required operation and maintenance of the BioClear Treatment System at the Harwich Elementary School and the Cultural Center in the amount of $26,760.
Second.
Any discussion, Joe?
I could just add, and, and direct the chair to sign.
And direct the chair to sign.
Okay. Michael?
So Larry, I think, well, we went through this pretty extensively on the middle school repurpose committee, and it is our requirement to pay half of this contract. I guess the only question is, this seems like an auto renew. Have we thought about going out to bid? It's, and just pointing out to the general public, it's roughly a $53,000 contract. Harwich, town of Harwich's portion is the $26,760, and the school would pay the same. So it's a $52,000 contract. Do we go out to bid for this? And if not, why not?
I'm looking at Joe, but I doubt whether we've gone out for bid on this, since it was a renewal of before, but it's probably a good suggestion to look at it in the future.
I can pull the, all the contract files on that and respond.
Do we need to vote on it tonight, then?
Yes. Yes.
It's a requirement that it gets maintenance.
Yes, short answer.
Okay.
We'll follow up, Michael, on that. It's a good, good point. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve computer equipment purchase agreement between the Town of Harwich and Hub Technical Services LLC for $65,559.30.
Is there a second? I think we discussed this some last week, didn't we, Joe?
Well, I've made reference to it in the past, and more specifically tonight, under the Technology Task Force, and also in the occupancy capacity. So what we've, when I established the Technology Task Force, we weren't made aware yet of the CARES Act reimbursement funds. But we recognize, or I recognize in discussions with staff, it's been confirmed that as well as we responded, we were caught flat-footed, if you will. We weren't prepared, as many places weren't prepared, for this sort of item and the remoteness of it, if you will. So we cobbled together any number of laptops, but not a sufficient amount for everybody, so that we did have work issues remotely, because people couldn't get into their work. I asked Lieutenant Tilzley and Foster Banford to look into, again, the concept under the CARES Act is accelerated telework capacity. And the reason why it's covered to some degree for reimbursement, I believe, I could be wrong on this one, but I believe it's about 25 cents on the dollar. But that's because there's a recognition by the federal government and the state that telework capacity is going to be increasing, not just because of pandemic and future waves, but it's the wave of the future. So this proposal, where Lieutenant Tilzley and Mr. Banford worked with Hubtech, identifies number of laptops that can be disseminated to department heads, with all, all department heads having the same materials and applications, which was not the case, or is not the case now. It'll allow us to have everybody literally on the same system at the same time. And then with that, then go to the second step of the task force of expanding to the online capabilities. So think of online ordering, online permitting, online document management, and online content document storage. All of which we need to successfully work remotely in part or in whole, depending upon what the future holds. So it is a big ask. There's no two ways about it, but this was the kind of thing that I had in mind when we were talking about surplus in fiscal year '20, but also cost. And I've got Lieutenant Tilzley available. If you had questions for him on the process that he went through, but I do recommend the board's approval on this process. Were this to be approved, we would seek reimbursement through CARES Act.
Any discussion? Michael?
This is listed as one of the items that is reimbursable, correct?
Correct. It's not, we don't anticipate FEMA to match it, but we won't know until we request it. So it is possible that there could be full reimbursement. But the other part of that is through FEMA. And right now, they've given no indication that they would approve this kind of purchase.
And given the workload, if I may, given the workload now and the rephasing staff back in, is this purchase to completely fill in so everybody can work remotely? Or is it based on what we're going to be phased-in staff?
So right now, this would be, every department had, would have one. And the departments that Megan and I have reviewed for occupancy issues, where we just don't have a place for them, we've accounted for those departments to have additional laptops. And so it's a laptop with docking station, so that wherever the employee is, they plug in, and they've got same connectivity home or remote and office, I should say. So it covers all department heads and any departments that we expect not to have full capacity to house them in a government building.
Michael?
Start to finish, how quickly can we be up and running?
Scott, I'm going to defer to you on that, if you heard the question.
I did. And Hubtech, the company approved several weeks ago to be our new IT support organization. They're very happy to engage us with this. They wouldn't necessarily commit. Some of it depends on our ability to work with them to schedule people's desktops to be available to convert. But we threw out the date, July 1st, at them. We chuckled a little bit at that, because it's not necessarily doable. But I think that, I believe within five weeks, we can get this done.
Can I ask you a question, Michael?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You, Joe? And then that moves us to the anchor donation.
Yes, under TA's report, so...
Don, don't comment on this one.
I don't want to get bogged down.
So in the interest of time, I will tell you that I did follow up after the meeting, reached out to staff, and got some background information. But there are some complications to that process that I can either get into now, or we can bring it back for a full discussion.
Let's bring it back for a full discussion, if you desire that.
Thank you. And then...
That was the, if I might, that was the request or the communication we received from Matthew Sutten. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, of course, it was brought up at the last meeting.
And the intent was for the Davis family to donate it to the town, to be put in the small park overlooking Whichmere Harbor, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Is there an issue with moving at cost? I know that they had offered to restore some of it as well, so...
So there were some concerns about restoring and repairing, I believe. The greater concern is that staff came across the deed for that property of land, and that sort of use is prohibited.
Putting an anchor on the property?
On that land, based on the deed, correct.
Now, where's the location again?
It's the overlook of Whichmere Harbor, where there are two more.
Yep, there's a bank there and stuff now.
The overlook.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
I don't know whether I'm correct here, but didn't the Davis family give that land to the town?
I don't, I don't disagree with what I'm trying to say to the board at this late hour is, when staff reviewed it, they came across the deed. The deed indicates that the grantee shall never permit any buildings, structures, docks, markers, or monuments, except the monument presently being erected by the grantor, to be erected or moved on to said premises. No shall any concession or other commercial enterprises be permitted to operate thereon.
And was it the Davis family that gave that?
This, I don't know. I can tell you that it is the...
Because I know it was Dave Davis, is when he, before he passed away, it was his desire to donate this.
Yeah, it was Eloise B. Larson who donated the land upon which the anchor is looking to be placed.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have to figure out.
So my overall point is, it's, the update is, we're working on it. There's more information.
Okay, thank you.
And I will share that I have experience in another community whereby the town could take an effort by side by side to change that part of the deed. It's not without consideration.
Michael?
And have we just, have we communicated this information, new information, back to Matt Sutten?
Not yet, because I just got it late last week. I wanted to present it to the board first.
I know this came up prior to us stop meeting, months ago, I believe.
Yeah.
That was the first. So if we could just communicate where we're at?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, at this point, I'm going to say that's my report, because I can't find anything else. So I'm, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Selectmen's reports. Don?
I know the chair knows how I feel about this, but I'm, the rest of the board doesn't. I'm going to say it out loud. We have been requested by the chair to fill out a evaluation form for the interim town administrator as the assistant town administrator. Given the fact that more than half of the year, he's been occupying a position higher than that with no commensurate salary increase, and the job duties are far greater than what he was hired to do, it's, I find it almost insulting, and I'm not going to fill out a job evaluation for a job that somebody's not filling.
By purpose for, for saying this, not to spend a lot of time on it, I recognize that. It gives us a baseline, and I'm assuming we'll include the review of the interim town administrator. But we owe Joe a, his, his first-year contracts ended May 20th. So we're a few weeks behind of, of acting on that. Normal procedure would be to give a short review. It would have been done by the town administrator, but of course, Joe's fulfilling both right now. And then we need to consider, as a board, moving, if we want to, an increase, salary step increase, which would also be our normal procedure. It wasn't meant to insult anyone, it's just as a baseline, Don, to get us started, to get to the next step. And we'll, because I know we're going through a selection process for a town administrator, but I think we ought to move ahead on the existing position as well.
You'll excuse me, however, Mr. Chair. The guy's getting paid less than all the other department heads in the building, save one. And there's a possibility, and a fairly good one, that he may not be selected for that job. So I'm not going to hamper his future by evaluating him. I mean, he'd have to get a six out of five, you know, based on the fact that he's acting as the person who would be the boss for the job that we'd be evaluating him on.
I would argue that you're, you're making it more complex than my intention is. My intention is, is to move ahead on the position is now, to be sure we're treating Joe fairly on this position, and before we move to the next one.
Don't be expecting mine.
I have no problem with it. I'll try and get mine done tomorrow, and I see it differently than Don. I think we give him a six-month evaluation, and then he gets extra points for taking on the extra duties, which, by the way, are in his contract as assistant that he takes over as acting in the absence of a. So there he gets points for that as well. So I will do mine, I will do mine tomorrow, and I completely disagree with Don.
Just to reiterate, I certainly no way of taking any negative on this. What I was trying to do was fill this block out, put this forward, and then the future is the future. Ed, thank you, though, for that. We can, we can argue that. Don, or Ed? Michael? Steve?
Just quick, on the elementary school question that we were going to engage in with the town of Chatham. Tomorrow, I believe, at 1:00 PM, Joe and I will be having a conversation with the town manager in Chatham. And I believe one of the selectmen will...
One of the selecting from Chatham, either of members of either town, school committee rep and the superintendent.
Yeah, just to begin on your behalf, to open a discussion, to see where we could go for some savings.
Great, great.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.